Meeting to order, roll call please.
Councilmember Ampero.
Here.
Councilmember Barnward.
Yeah.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yeah.
Mayor Protim Obeso Martinez.
Yeah.
And Mayor Tucker.
Here, um, please stand for the pledge. Ready, begin. Adjust, adjustments to the agenda. Item A one will be moved to a future date.
Mr. Mayor, there are no other adjustments to the agenda.
Alright, thank you.
I'd like to move item B four to action.
Alrighty. Um, B four is gonna be separate. Okay.
Make a motion to the consent agenda minus the item before that's been moved to action.
Certainly.
A two.
But, um, public comment right now, matter not appearing on the agenda, if you, what's that?
I, I thought he was calling for a vote on consent and we are still back on consent. Public comments.
Okay.
I'll withdraw my.
Public comments, matter not appearing on the agenda, if you wish to address the council concerning any item within the city council jurisdiction, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the mayor. At that time state your name and address for the, the record, the mayor reserves the right to place a time limit of three minutes on each person's presentation. And we have one written in. Mayor Cowley. And then Imperial Valley Regional Chamber.
Good evening, Mayor Tucker and esteemed council members. Uh, I'm here today to, uh, discuss the, um, opportunity for sponsorship from City of Imperial for the drone show, it's called Celebrate America. The Imperial Valley Regional Chamber of Commerce will be, uh, hosting on July fifth at the Imperial Valley Fairgrounds. And a letter was sent or emailed to each one of the council members as well as the city manager earlier this week, uh, itemizing, uh, the different sponsorship levels and opportunities, as well as a letter discussing the event. And I also wanted to, um, ask on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce if there was an, if we would be able to request from city manager any additional support in the way of, um, additional police presence and some other items that would be required for the event.
Alright, Mr. Marita, would you answer that?
And I do have a letter for you with the request.
We're, we're certainly happy to have those discussions and I, I guess, uh, just as a reaction, if we're talking about, sponsorships, uh, maybe we could work something in terms of if indeed, what, whatever resources. I, 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 when I heard that the, uh, event was gonna happen, I ex, I had expected to hear from, uh, the, the fairgrounds with i- if there was any tr- traffic sort of things, uh, of the sort that we do at fairtime. And so those are the kind of, yeah, we need to have those discussions sooner rather than later because a lot of those aspects might implicate overtime for officers or public services folks, depending on the nature of the assistance that the chamber and the fairgrounds is looking for, but we can have those. We're certainly happy to have those discussions.
Yeah, we just finalized the contract with the fairgrounds today and, um, Sheriff Miramontes is kind of leading the charge as well as far as the logistics for the event. And we did have a meeting today at four P M. Just to kind of start having those discussions. And so, um, yes, there will be more information and we'll be including you on those meetings as well.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move that to discussion later. Thank you. Okay, next, any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to presentations. A two budget presentation by Mr. Manrique, Administration Service Director.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, um, Victor Manrique is here again with the budget presentation. This time we're, uh, we're gonna be reviewing the capital improvement projects. And, um, I say review in a loose, uh, way, uh, these are the projects, uh, that have been presented by different department heads for their, uh, department, uh, for the city, uh, different view of cities. So I'm gonna be breaking down cost of future years and all that. This is also, this is like I said, it's only a presentation, this is not a final budget. This is just, uh, projects that have come, uh, having canceled, new renew and, um, we'll start with that, so. An overview of all the projects currently that we have, it's gonna be total fifty-two projects that we coming up for, well, actually, forty-eight, we need, I didn't remove the four canceled, so out of the fifty-two pro, uh, total projects, uh, this fiscal year we have completed, uh, six projects and, and you can see the, the projects with a little plus sign and the number once we go through them. Cancel, we have canceled, we, or removed four and you'll see the negative sign. Two new projects are coming starting the next fiscal year with the little asterix. Uh, currently in progress are eleven, pending to start are seven and for future years out of the five-year budget is gonna be fourteen, so that's, uh, the total fifty-two. If we break down the five-year budget, uh, over the next five years, it's a total sixty point nine million dollars. Those will be coming from different, uh, funding sources and we'll go ahead and see the, the different funding sources once we go into each department. Uh, but for current fiscal year, the original approved budget was, um, by council last, uh, at the beginning of fiscal year was thirty-one million. With the updates and all that, we came back to twenty-nine point nine. So far we have, uh, paid out twelve point six million out of those, uh, projects. Uh, whatever we don't pay it out, um, is gonna be rolling over to next year till those projects are completed. And, and you'll see a breakdown by fiscal year for each department. Uh, and you can see for the upcoming fiscal year, the request is thirteen point six, uh, for twenty-two, sorry, eleven point six, uh, for twenty-twenty-eight, only two point eight and for twenty-three-nine, three million. And those numbers I'm guessing is gonna be increasing as we go further into the five-year plan. Any questions? Alright, so we start with, uh, city hall projects. Uh, we have three projects, uh, one is called the accounting cleanup. This is all the, um, money that we have been spending, that's gonna be closing out, uh, by this fiscal year. Uh, bringing in consultant, uh, having accountant in how, uh, now that we have in-house, we already terminated those services. So this, uh, project is gonna be ending this fiscal year. The E R P project is still in process, it's gonna, a little bit slower than expected, but, uh, we're trying to ramp it up, uh, as of next month. And this is gonna be carryover. And we also have a remaining, um, amount for S B A, uh, grant project, so tho- those monies are gonna be, those monies have not been tied out to a specific project, but we will have those, uh, funds carryover. And the funding sources for these projects are water, wastewater, general fund and grant funds. Any questions in city hall? Moving along, we have, uh, Parks and Rec. Uh, currently, uh, there's no open projects for Parks and Rec. Tony did close out two projects this fiscal year, which is the welcome sign and the sunset park improvements. You can see the totals there, um, for those projects and upcoming, uh, projects, has four new projects. Uh, we have the Redondo Park installation of, uh, all-inclusive playground, the Eager Park new playground, the regional park design and California Rim Park Lot Project. You can see the projected, uh, expenditures. Funding sources for those projects are parking fees, C F D reserves and grant funded. And if you have like specific questions, Tony is right there. No questions here? So all, all projects, all new projects are, uh, figured to, um, start next fiscal year. So all monies have been, um, projected for next, uh, for twenty-twenty-six. Next, uh, fire and safety projects, uh, currently police did have one project which they closed out, which is the kennel facility. Uh, that has been already built out and, uh, paid for. Uh, for fire, uh, we are, we recently received a quote for a new fire, uh, truck, which came in at, uh, a little bit over a million. We're looking at, uh, funding opportunities, funding sources, uh, how can we finance, uh, the fire, which is, which has a three month, three-year, uh, delivery. So, once we start, we won't see it anyways till twenty-nine approximately.
Victor, I got a question on that.
Yes.
So even though that we won't see it for three years, the contract is renewed and I think their contract's coming up in the next year.
Right.
Would that cycle over or how would that work?
So the contract, uh, as the conversation with chief, we're, they are working on new contract. This is just for the actual fire ladder. And, um, the way of financing, we're still waiting on options if we, uh, this is just the total amount if we would pay out of pocket right now. Well, actually we'll get a eighty-eight thousand dollar discount if we pay in full. But doesn't really make any sense if we can have financing available, so. But, uh, we're waiting those options, so, but, uh, this will be the actual, uh, total for the fire, uh, ladder, uh, for a new fire ladder. Next, we have community development projects, uh. Mr. Moana has been very busy. He has a lot of projects open, uh, he did close out the eighteen Boulevard class by, um, bite pack, uh, project. Um, you see that we went over the, uh, the number there, we just were fine tuning the expenditures on some of the projects because some of the projects overlap. As you can see there, uh, two projects with two asterix, those are like projects that, uh, that were under public services or water fund and wastewater that, but it got combined with the new, with the rehabilitation seven, ten and fourteen. So everything through a change order got combined, so the actual expenditures are correct, we just need to put it together as one simple project. So, not simple, but one, one complete project, uh, under community development, since they are taking charge of that, uh, project. Mr. Moana has, what, fifteen projects? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. Um, most of his projects have been started except for the, the ones you see on eight thirty-six, three forty-five, which are continuations of projects that are currently open. So, uh, those are mainly grant funded, uh, with the exception of the eight thirty-three and eight fifty, which are wastewater and, uh, and water funded and the other ones are state tax, um, L T A and local transportation. Any questions on any other projects? Next, um, public services, uh, one of, uh, Mr. Dell's, uh, uh, overviews, uh, he completed the rehabilitation for the city. This came in a little bit higher than originally expected, but, uh, we're, we were able to manage it, uh, for the city. Currently, new projects for public services, there should be one more that I didn't consider, which is, uh, well, we have the street maintenance project, which is a continuation of what he already started this year. So we need to find funds of, uh, availability to continue, uh, the progress and rehabilitations of all city streets along with storm drains. And one that I didn't put down there that I already, um, went over in the previous, um, presentation was the street sweeper, which we are looking to maybe acquiring one. So, um, I missed that, I didn't add it to the C I P projects, uh, list or, I don't wanna say wishlist, but, uh, project list. Moving on, um, we have the, the, the big ones, which is, uh, water plant projects. Uh, currently open, we have one project that already started, which is the water treatment plant design. Uh, we are removing three projects here, you can see eight fifty-six, eight thirty-four and thirty-five, um, which are not gonna be, not gonna be done, um. One was moved into another project, so we combined the project, so it's not gonna be a project on its own, but as a component to another project. The other two are being removed. Um, and as far as new projects, uh, it has two new projects for water. Availability for water, you can see total, it's, uh, exceeding thirteen million. With the exception of the six million dollar, um, wastewater headworks replacements, we are able to cover those projects. But, um, in talks with Mr. Dell, the, the, the headworks are something crucial that we do need to plan for. So eventually we will need to find, uh, the sources available to have those, uh, to have the headworks replaced or eliminate another project. And these are all water funds and water capa- water capacity funds.
So, I'm sorry Victor, to be clear, the, the headworks is on the wastewater side, correct?
My bad.
Okay.
I thought I had it here, okay, okay, my apologies, so wait, yeah, it's wastewater and I put it underwater, so we can cover water plants projects then. Uh, so removing that six million, okay, I'll make the adjustment. Thank you. So with that said being, uh, we move along to wastewater projects. Here we have a lot more. So I, I, I messed up to the project, so the water manhole eight fifty-nine should be on the water and the wastewater, the previous one should be on the wastewater. So I'll make that correction, my apologies. Here we have currently three projects, uh, open, which are the clay, clay pool sewer pipe and the design for the wastewater headworks. New projects, um, we have one new project, which is way down the line, but with something we need to start reserving for the membrane replacement. Or as far as removing projects is the shop office building design. And we will continue with the other, one, two, three, four, five, nine projects. Any questions on wastewater? So once I present the actual C I P project, I'll make the adjustments and the corrections. Uh, we're working on some bits, uh, some are projections like, uh, uh, I know parks are going up to bid, uh, public services going up to bid for some of the projects. So once we get a real amount, we'll make those adjustments, uh, and present it to council for the official C I P project, uh, budget. And once we close out the year, once, well, we're trying to reconcile all the projects, all the expensing, how we're getting, how we're paying for these expenses, so in conjunction with, uh, closing So, in conjunction with closing out the fiscal year, we'll know exactly how much money and how many projects we can afford, which funding sources are available, and which projects we need to scratch here and there to fund those projects. So, those, that's it for CIP projects. Still pending items for budget season is the city review and budget outlook and the detailed budget workshop. So, I don't know, I didn't get confirmation if we are set for the night. So, I don't know if we're
What time was the proposed time on that?
6:30, the email that I got.
No, next Friday.
At 6:30 as well?
This is, this will be for Monday.
I'm good. I'm good.
Okay, so, all right. So, there we'll, we'll go over the previous presentations in detail, line item, and I'll highlight the differences, what we're increasing, what we're decreasing, what's the major impacts for, that we need to look, look ahead for this upcoming fiscal year. Which also end for the following week. If council has no objections based on the review next week, looking to adopt city budget on the 18, along with the gun limit and CIP budget adoption not until next month, once we clear out exactly like, like explained, the billing and the funding sources. So, that would be my pending items for the budget. I don't know if council wants to see additional information on anything that has been previously presented. Any questions so far for or request for upcoming meeting? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. B, Consent Agenda. All items appearing under the consent agenda will be acted upon by the city council with one motion without discussion. Should any council member or other person's request that an item be considered separately, that item will then be taken up at the time determined by the mayor. And we pulled B4 from this consent for now. So, I can have a motion?
Now, I will make the motion to approve consent agenda item with that, with the exception of item B4.
Second.
I got a motion in a second. Please vote. Okay.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Now, we're going to go to B4. Authorize the rejection of all bids for the shop tank and Eaton tank modifications, new ventilation system installation project bid 2025-03. Authorize rebidding. And then, after, after he's done, go ahead and step up and state your name and address, please.
My name is Josh Quintaro. Address is 610 Silverwood Street here in Imperial. And I just came here just to make a quick comment, you know, just to formally object to the rebidding of this tank job. I mean, I think we gave a, representing Total Industries, my company, and I think we gave a fair and competitive bid based on the big documents that we bid off of. We're local, we, our business is in Imperial. My subcontractor is also local, his business address is also in, in town. And, you know, it takes several weeks and a lot of resources to competitively bid these jobs. And just want to, hope you guys can reconsider. I mean, I know you guys have rules to follow, but pretty much all I had to say about, about the matter. So, hopefully you can, there's a reason why we weren't notified, why it was going to be rejected, but we hope, based on the bids and specs that we were provided, that we met all the requirements and we feel that we have. So, if you have any questions for me? If not.
I would have to refer this thing to Mr. Dell or to the city attorney.
I'll start if you don't mind. I'm happy to start. So, I'd be very pleased if the council decides to not go this way and, and award the project. But the reason, especially local contractors, there were three major reasons why it was determined we should move in this direction. The first reason was that we received some information from the second contractor that he was considering filing a bid protest. And, and the reason why he wanted to file a bid protest was because there was some missing information with regard to the subcontractor listing in the bid. The information that I got back from Total Industries was that the subcontractor rules on the bid was that if it's less than $5,000, then you don't have to list the subcontractor. However, no documentation was provided for that for us. So, there was, there's a concern that there would, there will be a bid protest. The second, the second reason was that because the engineer's estimate was 1.2 million, we felt that if we rebid it, there might be a chance of a lower price. And the third reason is because we can't start the project until the low flows at the water treatment plant, which is in October. So, that means that we have time to rebid the project and, and move it forward that way. So, there were three major reasons that this was decided upon. But I'm happy if the council says, you know, let's move forward with Total Industries. I believe Total Industries has indicated that they'll hold their bid until the work starts in October. So, there's that too.
And just briefly, as a reminder to the councils, the city, we have the option when we do have disputes, even though we welcome the local contractor, we do let them know in advance. We try to fix the issues if we can, but we always have that option to rebid. And although it's frustrating for the contractors, sometimes it's in the best interest of the city, and it resolves all the problems. Because I'm certain if, if these folks rebid, they would comply with the rules.
All righty.
Well, I mean, just to be clear, as far as the, the pricing, I mean, if it does help sway any decision, we, we were in agreement that if, you know, we were awarded the project, that we could hold the price through October, because we can secure the materials now. So, I don't know, in three, four, or five months from now, it might be double, triple, you know, all these crazy tariff things that are going on. But regardless, I just came here to hope you guys would reconsider, since literally that is in our backyard. One of the jobs, we could literally walk to the tank. So, it couldn't be a better fitting job for our guys and, like I said, keep literally our local employees that actually live here in the town busy for three or four months. So, that's, that's all I got, really.
All right. Any other question? Anything? All right. Robert?
So, at this point, our, our choices are to rebid or to go with Total Industries?
You, you, well, I'd refer this to the attorney, but
Yeah, I, I think you do have the legal option to award to this contractor. You also have the ability to continue it to the next meeting, rather than take action today, and then be able to get a more thorough report, maybe from your city manager and finance on this matter. Or you could go with the recommended action, which was provided by the city manager and the, you know, Mr. Dale to reject. So, any of those three options would be acceptable.
So, as far as the issues that were brought up that are potentially going to be protested, are they items that can be fixed now that the bids have been opened?
We believe that if we have evidence that it's less than the $5,000 provided, that, that that could potentially be fixed. It was fixed after the fact. They're supposed to be listing, they're saying that they're not using them. We could do a little more verification. But it's also my understanding that there was an addendum issue and, and one additional on this.
There was another project. There was no addendum on this one.
Okay. So, can be fixed. I, I would recommend at this point, based on the, the commentary today and the, what I can see with the council to try to keep the local contractor, that you do continue it and let us give additional information review to see if we can salvage the bid and make sure that we don't have any finance issues. That would be, in, in my opinion, the best option.
I'd make a motion to table it for the next meeting.
I got a motion in a second. Please vote.
Motion carries 4-0 with one abstain from Councilmember Burnworth.
All right, thank you for your time.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. Up next, B7. Approve three resolutions for the Imperial Landscape Maintenance District. Number two, SkyRent subdivision. What's that? Oh, that, okay. That's part of consent. Oh, sorry about that. C, Public Presentations Discussion. Public hearing regarding public employee vacancy, level recruitment and retention efforts pursuant to AB 2561. Open public hearing at 7:42. To city presentation by Kristen Smith.
Thank you. Good evening, council. Today, we'll be presenting the City of Imperial AB 2561 Annual Reporting on Vacancies and Retention. One moment. Sorry about that. So, if you have any questions along the way, please feel free to ask. But today, we will go over the AB 2561 overview. We'll be, I'll be providing citywide information over the workforce overview, vacancy information, recruitment information, any hiring issues and retention information. And then, we will review the bargaining unit specific information related to vacancies, current vacancy update, current vacancy status and conclusion, followed by labor presentations, city council questions and discussion, any final comments, and then public comment. So, what is AB 2561? Effective January 1st, 2025, Government Code Section 3502.3 was added to the Meyer Millias Brown Act, imposing new obligations on public sector agencies related to tracking and presenting information on job vacancies. AB 2561 declares that job vacancies are a widespread and significant problem for the public sector. And MMBA authorizes local public agencies to form, join, and participate in the activities of employee organizations of their own choosing for the purpose of representation on matters of labor relations. There's a statewide interest in ensuring that public agency operations are appropriately staffed and that high vacancy rates do not undermine public employee relations. And California legislature found that high employee vacancy rates contribute to negative impacts on public service delivery to citizens and increased workloads for public sector staff, leading to burnout and increased turnover. The purpose of this bill is that it requires annual public hearing before budget adoption and invites input from recognized bargaining units during the public hearing. We have two bargaining units within the city. We have the Teamsters Local Union 542 and the Imperial Police Officers Association. Notice that the public hearing was given to labor representatives and to the public on May 21st, 2025. So, the city's obligation under AB 2561 is that the city shall present information on the following items, the status of vacancies, recruitment and retention efforts, and any necessary changes to policies or procedures and recruitment activities that may lead to obstacles in the hiring process during the public hearing. And this must be done before the governing board at least once per fiscal year and again prior to the budget adoption. If the vacancy rate is at least 20% in any bargaining unit, additional obligations do apply. However, the City of Imperial, no bargaining unit meets that threshold. The purpose of the hearing is to increase transparency on staffing shortages in a public setting to address recruitment and retention challenges. It provides an avenue to discuss those challenges and maintain a stable workforce. The obligations under the law apply to all public agencies that are subject to the MMBA. And this presentation satisfies the obligations of AB 2561 that are codified in Government Code Section 3502.3 of the Myers-Millias-Brown Act. So, our workforce overview will be looking at positions that were reviewed for calendar year 2024. So, that would be January 1st through December 31st. We had a total budgeted full-time position of 124. The overall vacancy rate for the city, city for all staff was 6.7%. The IPOA vacancy rate was 3.6%. Teamsters was 13.6%. And under MSPC Unrepresented, 9.7%. And none of the groups meet or exceed the 20% vacancy threshold. We do have 87 employees that fall under MOU labor contracts. 59 of those employees are in Teamsters. And we have 28 employees in, under IPOA. So, the vacancy information citywide is broken down by month here. And you'll see the number of vacancies created, the number of vacancies filled, the remaining, number of vacancies remaining at the end of that month, the number of budgeted FTEs, or full-time equivalent positions, and the percentage of vacancies. You'll see that we started the year off with 120 full-time positions. And in July, we added four new positions for the year, bringing our total to 124. The average percent of vacancies for the end of each month was 6.7%. Our highest percentage was 9.7% and our lowest was 2.5%, ending the year at 9.7. Any questions so far? And so, our recruitment process is outlined. We do, it starts when a vacancy is created. Vacancies can be created through voluntary separation, retirement, involuntary separation, internal movements, or newly budgeted positions. Once we have a vacancy, the department head submits a request to fill that vacancy to HR. And then, they can either utilize an existing eligibility, eligibility list or ongoing recruitment, or they can, we can open an external and internal recruitment as well. The job postings are advertised on our websites and through NeoGov. We utilize NeoGov to track our applications and our recruitment processes. And then, for applicant screening, HR does conduct the initial screening for qualifications. And then, the applicants are reviewed by department heads for a subject matter expert or SME review. The interviews under the candidate oral exam are scheduled. And we determined, we work with the department head to select the panel and the questions. And then, HR does review and approve the panel and questions for each interview session. Once the applicants have been interviewed, we do create an eligibility list. And then, and that eligibility list is based on the oral exam scores. And department heads can choose to select from an eligibility list for up to one year. Candidate selection is next. HR does recommend hiring the top candidate based on scores, but the department head does have the discretion to select from the top three applicants. And then, once a conditional offer can be made, once the applicant is selected by the department head, then we do conduct thorough preplacement background clearances, live scan, a new hire physical and drug screen when applicable. For the safety, we also have the stress tests and polygraph exams and psych exams. And then, we, once the applicant is completely cleared, we do provide them with the job replacement offer and Provide them with the job replacement offer and schedule their start date. And so for twenty twenty four, we did fill twenty four positions, full-time positions. And those positions were filled by varying types of recruitment. And so one, one position was filled based off of an existing eligibility list or ongoing recruitment. And it took an average of seventy one days to fill that position from vacancy to start date. The, we also had twenty two positions filled by new external or internal recruitments. And the average number of days to fill those positions is one hundred and one days. And then we have the new recruitments for internal applicants only. And those do take an average of thirty nine days to fill. In twenty twenty four, we did have twenty eight full-time and nine part-time seasonal recruitments that we held. We received one thousand four hundred and eighty five application, applications for employment with the city. One thousand three hundred and fifty one of those applications were for full-time employment. And a hundred and thirty four of those applications were for part-time or seasonal employment opportunities. So hiring challenges, the, we, as the city reviewed all the applicable policies, procedures and recruitment activities. To identify any potential obstacles. And we found that one obstacle is salary expectations. There is a misalignment between applicant salary demands and available compensation for some positions. We mostly found that those were more entry-level positions. General maintenance workers and I T technicians. Strategic solutions is the city hired a third-party consultant to complete a classification and compensation study. That study concluded in December twenty twenty four and the city is currently discussing. Options with labor groups to review the recommendations and next steps for implementation. And so retention efforts that the city has is a competitive benefit package. We also have a three-year contract with labor with COLA increases of fifteen percent over three years. So fiscal year twenty three, twenty four, there was a ten percent increase. With consecutive two point five percent increases the following two years fiscal year twenty four, twenty five. And one coming up this fiscal year twenty five, twenty six. We have opportunity for annual merit increases. Competitive pension plans with contributions to both CalPERS and Social Security. We have competitive assignment pay and cert pay for Teamsters. And competitive specialty assignment pay and education pay under IPOA. We offer bilingual pay. We have the voluntary nine eighty work schedule for flexibility. And we observe fourteen holidays. We've generous paid time off, vacation cash out, tuition and gym reimbursements, employee training and development. And we promote a positive workforce culture with our employee engagement committee, team building activities and employee recognition. Any questions so far? So for our retention overview, we had a total of thirty one vacancies created in the year twenty twenty four. The annual staffing turnover rate is eight, was eight percent. And the number of vacancies that were created by the newly budgeted positions out of that thirty one was four positions. For a growth, staff growth. Percentage of thirteen. And then we had eight vacancies created by internal promotion and six created by internal transfer. Those internal opportunities accounted for forty five percent of our vacancies. We had zero retirements and three involuntary separations. Resulting in ten percent of our vacancies coming from attrition. And then for voluntary separation, we had ten voluntary separations. Which resulted in thirty two percent of our, out of our thirty one vacancies. Any questions? And so to break that down by bargaining unit, as of the end of the year twelve thirty one, twenty four. IPOA had one vacancy out of twenty eight full-time equivalent positions. For a percentage of vacancies, three point six percent. Teamsters had eight vacancies out of fifty nine positions for a percentage of thirteen point six. M S P C unrepresented had three vacancies out of thirty one positions, nine point seven percent. And contracted employees, zero vacancies out of two with the zero percent vacancy rate. And again, none of the bargain units met that twenty percent threshold. Since we are going to be moving into our budget presentations, hopefully in the next coming weeks. We wanted to give a quick overview of our current vacancy data as of today. And so as of today, IPOA has twenty eight budgeted full-time positions, two vacancies. And sits at seven point one percent vacancy rate. For Teamsters, we have fifty nine positions, two vacancies with a vacancy rate of three point three percent. Management supervisory professional confidential unrepresented has thirty five positions. Two vacancies and a five point seven percent vacancy rate. And contracted employees, we have two positions, zero vacancies and a zero vacancy rate. So that adds up to one hundred and twenty four full-time positions, six vacancies overall and a four point eight percent vacancy rate at the moment. And those positions are a one police officer and one police services officer one. One crew leader and one information technology technician three. One public services supervisor and one fleet and facility supervisor. Few of these do have start dates next week, so they won't be vacant for very long. And the remaining, we will be working to fill those as, as soon as we can through our, our recruitment process. Yes.
There's, you have one more, okay. The police services officer one.
Yes. Yeah, your handouts are when the, the here, we, we presented, we prepared the hearing for the agenda prep. But we had this one come up after agenda prep was complete and so we updated this today. So the screen has the current as of today and we can provide that to you as well. Any questions? So in conclusion, this presentation satisfies our obligation of A B twenty five sixty one for the year. All groups are under the twenty percent vacancy threshold with an overall vacancy rate of six point seven percent. There's no council, council action needed at this time. And we now will offer the opportunity for employee engagement, employee organizational presentations. So I do see. Were you planning to, to present this evening? And, and I don't see.
Any bargaining units?
No, I don't see Teamsters here either. So now we'll move on to the governing body questions and discussion.
Say great job with the six percent turnover.
You guys have some amazing like benefits. I totally forgot about the gym one. I was like, you guys need a nurse practitioner. I don't work here, but I hope that employees utilize the benefits that are made available to them. Some of them are really tuition reimbursement.
Any employee comments or?
Uh, no, no comments for me.
Okay. Comments. Close this meeting at eight o'clock.
Thank you.
More action needed. The action items, discussion, action. D one, award, construction contract for the C A Irving Parking Lot Project Bid twenty twenty five dash oh four. C I P A sixty four. Mister Lopez.
Good evening, mayor and council. This project, from the way we started in twenty twenty one. With the application till now has been a lengthy one. A lot of back and forth with A P C D. And updating of quotes and things. So we're finally at the point where we're going to award and we're moving forward with construction. We did a competitive bid process. Out of that bid process, we received two bids. In your report, you'll see one from S L A paving for a hundred and twenty three thousand seven hundred dollars. And pyramid construction for one hundred and six thousand nine hundred and sixty nine and seventeen cents. So this project, just to give you a little history, is through Rule three ten. Which in a sense is developer fees that come back. This is for dust mitigation. If you guys are familiar with the Fourteenth Street Park. It's all dust dirt parking lots. So with this project, we hope to create two additional parking. Lots that are designated on the south and west sides of the park. If you look at the attachments on the report, it shows you kind of an overview on the improvement plans on where, where those will be located. This will create approximately about twelve thousand five hundred square feet of parking lot space. So if you look at the contingency requested as part of the project award. We typically don't do a contingency of twenty percent. It's a little high for a hundred thousand dollar project. But this contingency will allow us, since we have a little bit more money in the budget, to do some different things. We have some grindings from projects that we've done here in the, in the city. That we hope to, as part of this contingency, also spread around the entire fields. On the north and east side. So we're gonna spend as much of this money, if not all of it. In this contingency, so we don't have to come back to you guys and, and request the additional funding. We do have an award of a hundred and forty nine thousand. So this contingency amount and the labor compliance would be covered under the hundred and forty nine. So, and I'll stand for any questions.
Any question?
Look forward to it. I didn't intend to, I take, make a motion for it.
I got a motion. And a second, please vote. Thank you, Tony.
Motion carries four zero with one abstain from council member Burnworth.
Okay, up next, D two. Approve a sidewalk survey proposal from Precision Concrete Cutting through a master service agreement. With J P I A, Mister Dale.
Thank you, Mister Mayor Council. So on April second, the city council approved and adopted the new sidewalk and inspection and maintenance program. Which split the city into five major grids to. Facilitate the inspection and repairs. So we'll get through the five grids in five years. They're one, one per year. We solicited a proposal from, from this company. And Precision Sidewalk or Precision Cutting, I think it's called, concrete cutting. They have a master agreement with C J P I A. And they gave us a proposal. It's, it's essentially a proposal they give to every city that's in the J P I A. Per mile of sidewalk. And in this case, it was ten thousand three hundred and twenty eight dollars and fifty cents. We originally talking about possibly just having the contractor come and do the repairs. Like we would do the inspections. However, this company, that's part of the repairs is their inspection. So they don't do the repairs without the inspections. And so ten thousand three hundred and twenty eight is the inspection fee. They will, they will include in that inspection fee, the G I S files for the city. Working with our Department of. Do-It, the Do-It Department. And so, so we'll be working with them. This, this company, as they only do the cutting. So if there's a trip hazard of three eighths inch, three quarter inch or one inch, they can come in and shave the concrete. The, the places where the concrete needs to be replaced, they will identify them and let us know. And either we will do it or find a way to get that done through the residential way of doing it. Or, or we'll do it if we have time. And so that's where we're at. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have or comments.
I was getting excited at four hundred and fifty five dollars a mile. I thought that was sidewalk replacement.
So moved.
I got a motion and a second. Vote please. Okay, up next, D three. Adopt the plans and specification authorized public bidding. For the twenty twenty five City of Imperial Manhole and Gravity Sewer Collection System. Inspection and inventory project bid twenty twenty five dash oh eight, C I P eight fifty three. Mister Dale.
Thank you, mayor. Mister Mayor, so we do have ongoing a project that will be rehabilitating multiple manholes. And installing new manholes. This is a project that will inspect and give us a report, a detailed report of all one thousand seven hundred. Manholes, especially the ones that are in the old town, which are made of brick and mortar. And also includes the, we, we identified about twelve miles of sewer pipeline. That need to be inspected through C C T V. And in those are the areas of old Imperial as well. And we're not going to inspect all, you know, hundred miles of our sewer lines. So this, this is another project that it has to be a certified contractor that does this. And we'll be trying to contact multiple contractors to see how many bids that we can possibly get. This is another project that we anticipate starting when summer basically ends in, in October, something like that. Because they're probably, it'll likely be an out-of-town firm, a specialty firm. But you know, we'll welcome if it's a local firm also. So. This is a project that I've been kind of informing the council that we'll be looking at over the past months.
Yeah, no, there are some bad ones out there that we don't want to pull the lid off because they may fall in.
Yeah. We, we like to identify the problems proactively as opposed to, I, you know, reacting to problems. So we, we originally, so one of the, in all transparency, the, the cost, we originally had three hundred and fifty thousand as an estimate. We, we estimated that based on a daily rate. And in talking to the city of, of El Centro Public Works Department, they are performing a similar project. And they were telling me that the costs are coming in much higher. So we're gonna see what that actual cost comes in at.
Alrighty.
For some reason, I feel like we have a camera, don't we? I, I thought we had one of these cameras, but is it just because we can't, we don't have staff to do it internally or?
So we do have a camera and, but yeah, this, this is a, a massive project. It's gonna start, you know, in October and probably go through March. There's one thousand seven hundred manholes. So you imagine, you know. They can probably do thirty per day or something, you know, so, so it is a massive project. As, as part of this project as well, to save on some of the cost. We are proposing that the city will clean the line before they do the inspection. So we have the vac trucks and the jet. So that, that is a proposal to help save some costs on it.
But that's also a lot of manpower that we're gonna be down from other areas of the city. So we gotta.
Twelve miles of sewer line being cleaned, yes. So it is, it is quite an endeavor on that. And, and if that's the direction, I can certainly change that.
No, I, I think it's a good direction, but you gotta, it's gonna take two or three of your guys off of your regular work. We, we did that to Tony one time. We had his guys fixing the roof and then we were getting after him for not pulling the right weeds. Yeah, yeah. True story. Yeah, but yeah. Yeah, we're trying to save money, but we don't want to make you give up here.
And, and I might also mention this is integral part of what our plan is to do a wastewater collections system master plan. So without this information, the master plan, we can't really do a collection system master plan. We're gonna, we're gonna be getting inverts on all of the manholes. And then we'll do a survey for the top of manholes. And so we'll have pipe sizes, conditions. And inverts and slopes. And then we will be able to do a master plan of wastewater. That's the ultimate goal. pipe sizes, conditions, and inverts and slopes, and then we will be able to do a master plan of of wastewater. That's the ultimate goal.
So essentially, yeah, this is like a piece of not having Pandora's Box every time we open up a manhole.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, thank you. All right.
I'll make a motion.
I got a motion.
I'll second it.
And a second. Vote, please.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay. D four. Award construction contract for that Ayton Road Sewer Line Replacement Project Phase Two Bid twenty twenty five dash oh six.
So this one was a bit of a surprise for a few reasons. Uh, I was expecting to get, you know, three bids at least. We had contractors that were, that were interested. I was talking to and at the su- first surprise, we only got one bid. And the second surprise was that the bid came in about ten or twenty percent lower than the engineer's estimate, so.
I thought you were gonna say higher.
No. The engineer's estimate was two point one million and it came at one, one point eight seven three, so. Um, two surprises there and and but um, based on the, we only got the one bid, but based on the, the price of the proposal, the recommendation is to move forward.
And what section is this again?
This would be, okay, so if you recall, we did the, the twenty one inch sewer line along Ayton Boulevard. And I had promised that that was part of a change order and we had to do that to, to get it done before the paving was obviously. But we didn't change order the entire project, so we were, we bid the second phase. Now, the second phase goes from eighty six and Ayton north um, up to the Claypool Pump Station. And one other thing that we found out as a part of this project was that the Claypool Pump Station wet wells is much undersized. It's a six foot diameter wet well, and so what that means is that now that we're diverting all the sewer to this pump station, the pumps would potentially fail soon because they, they turn on and off so fast. They, they're supposed to, you're supposed to turn off and on and off maybe no more than so many times per hour. And with a six foot wet well, it would just be turning on and off, and so it's bad for the pumps. So in this project, we are replacing the wet well with a twelve foot diameter wet well. And then um, in a, in a subsequent action, we will be asking the council to approve new pumps as well, so that, that will be coming secondary to this. This project includes only the sewer, gravity sewer line and the connections and the new wet well, which is twenty feet deep. So this is, to me, I thought the price was uh, pretty amazing that and I feel pretty good about it.
Yeah, and I know this question might not be pertaining to this, but you said we're gonna come back with motors?
Yes, so the pumps themselves, so we.
Sorry, pumps. Are those standardized through all of our system?
Yeah, it, we, we use Gorman Rupp pumps, and so I think we just got the quote just recently in the email, just today in fact, so we'll probably be bringing that back here shortly. Um, and uh, we'll see how that goes, but what we're purpo- we're, we're thinking is we're, we'll purchase the equipment and do some of the work ourselves in, in terms of the new electrical and the, and the installation of the pumps. Again, to, to try to, you know, save funds on that one. But with, with the way the bid price came in, plus the pumps, we're, we're still probably in the two point one range, which is amazing.
All right.
Make a motion.
I got a motion.
Seconding.
And a second. Vote, please.
Motion carries five zero.
Up next, D five. Approve the purchase and the installation of two screen retrofit sets for the Huber technology for the wastewater treatment plant headworks. Mister Dale.
Okay, so we've been, we've been talking a lot about the wastewater headworks, um, and, and I've been talking a lot about our membrane system, which is an amazing technology and it works extremely well, but you have to protect the membranes and um, we've been having a bit of a difficulty with our membranes getting fouled and the, and our operators taking a lot of time to do what they call a clean in place, where they pull up the membranes and they clean them and then they put them back, so it, it's uh, become sort of an onerous thing that, that they've been doing. Um, and the membranes themselves to replace are about two million dollars right now. The membranes have a lifespan of about ten years, um, but if they're not maintained properly, it could even be less. And you heard in the presentation today that we wanna make sure that we have reserves for that when the time comes that the membranes do need to be replaced. I'm told that the membranes have been performing adequately and that we haven't had any major issues except for the fact that they're getting fouled so, so often. Under the design, the original design of the wastewater treatment plant, the, the city installed a filter which is called Salsiness. And the Salsiness filter, which, and I thank the city manager and the council for um, approving the parts for that. But the Salsiness filter, it comes from Nor- Norway, it's Norwegian or something, so getting parts is very, very difficult. And what I'm told is the longest that it's been running in continuous operation is nine months, and then it goes down, and then they have to take it out apart and they have to fix it. Our, our wastewater chief operator has uh, extreme knowledge with this. He's repaired every part of that Salsiness, but has no no confidence in it. When the original uh, Salsiness filter was purchased, it was purchased, uh, Salsiness was a part of Trojan Companies, which is a very well trusted, very great brand that we use on other, other parts of the project, of the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, but now so, that Salsiness brand has now since been left, left Trojan, uh, and so it becomes very difficult, so. What we, what we found was that the uh, the original Huber screens are, are not sized so that they can screen out that material appropriately because the engineers were relying on this Salsiness. Now, it's working right now. But we do, we, based on the cost of the membranes and keeping the membranes in the, in the best condition as we can, part of it, we're gonna, we have a headworks project coming uh, and part of it is a recommendation to install these um, these further screens in our Huber system. So we're, we're, we're trying to make sure that we take care of these membranes the best we can. Uh, and that's what this is, project is, is about, and happy to try to answer any questions.
I have a question. Um.
Yeah.
The Norwegian or whatever company, I'm not gonna say the name because I'll butcher it. Um, when it started to fail, what was the, what was the thought process there? Is it like a guarantee, a warranty or?
Yes, and so I, I wasn't here, but I mean, I tried to get all the information and history as I could in case you could ask this question and um, the answer is that the Salsiness filter failed fairly quickly after it was put into place. Things were warping, things were made out of plastic, whatever, and then the company came in and replaced everything at no charge. Thinking that that was fixed, it, again, it failed in the next three months and then it was repa- repaired again. And then I guess it worked for nine months and then, and now we've been having problems with the computer system and, and so. Yeah, we, we, uh, the, this is a recommendation from our wastewater treatment plant staff in chief, and I, I concur with it because the uh, is, we can keep the membranes, if we can even keep the membrane lasting one more year, this project will be financially reasonable, right? Uh, because of the two million dollars, so you spread out two million dollars over ten years, it's two hundred thousand dollars a year. So if we can make the membranes last one more year, even this project would be worth it, so.
I don't have a problem with, you know, saving the system. It's just the faulty system of before, like, it's like buying a lemon.
So is there no warranty left?
Oh, no, yeah, no, there was, there's a one year warranty when the wastewater treatment plant was um, put in operation. Um, you know, and so, yeah, no, no warranty. Yeah.
All righty. Any question? If not.
I'll make a motion.
I got a motion and a.
Second.
And a second. Please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Next up, D six. I didn't forget about you, Mister Moore. Approval of Resolution number twenty twenty five sixteen, adopting the project list for fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six funded by S B one. Mister Moore.
Good evening, Council. Before you is a resolution if uh, adopted tonight uh, would allow us to uh, receive and expend uh, S B one funds. Uh, for the fiscal year of twenty five, twenty six, we will be receiving around six hundred thousand dollars and we're gonna be utilizing those funds uh, on the projects that you see on the resolutions. Uh, it can be utilized for current projects, ongoing projects. Uh, we're gonna be using it as a, uh, maybe a balancing change order, uh, it can be utilized uh, as a match. Um, and, and we're gonna be also utilizing it um, um, for street projects for public services as well. Um, staff recommends approval and I'll stand for any questions that you may have.
Any question? And then?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I got a motion.
Second.
And a second. Vote, please.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, up next is E reports. Mister Moore.
Um, in addition to the projects that staff is working on that were shown by finance. Um, last week, the planning commission approved a conditional use permit for a circle gate that will be located along S R eighty six and Nekro Road. Uh, we're almost at finish line. Um, and we're very excited for that project. Thank you.
So they're getting ready to get started?
Pretty soon.
All right, Mister Dale.
I warned him I would do this next meeting and I, I just wanna call out Mister Damon Harmon out there. He's come to every city council meeting since I've been here and he's just, he's a, he's the cornerstone of the cities. I just wanted to call him out. Give him a little bit of difficult time, but.
Mister Lopez.
So um, one of the first things I wanna mention is the regional park survey is still open. So we have that on all platforms, social media, City of Imperial website, uh, Facebook, Instagram, uh, I believe my Imperial app. Uh, we sent it to all of our utility accounts uh, throughout the city. So uh, these, those efforts for input ideas, community bu- community feedback, uh, it's still open. It will close on June thirtieth, so please provide uh, your ideas and feedback for, to help us uh, in, in that design moving forward. Um, so that you're not forgotten, your voice is heard. Uh, if you haven't signed your kid up for our summer programs, uh, we're still, we still have a, a week leading into. Uh, they officially start on June sixteenth, next week. Uh, we will be doing the uh, training of the staff that will be uh, watching over our residents' kids, our lifeguards, our rec leaders. Uh, that, all next week will be training. Uh, if you guys wanna see our, our lifeguards try to rescue me on the pool, you're welcome to come on Friday.
Is it all of this?
This Friday?
Can they rescue Dennis?
This, uh, next Friday?
Next Friday.
Yes, at the Imperial Pool. Uh, I'll be happy to share that time. They tried to do it last year and uh,
drowning our children.
Uh, a lot of these kids come in are real uh, small and um, very large individuals, so.
You can't drown Audrey.
No. So uh, sign your kids up, uh, they're still, uh, go on civic rec, uh, and um, if you haven't done that already, uh, we still have availability for different things. And uh, if you, uh, for some reason are having a financial difficulty and can't afford certain things, we have some opportunities. Please contact our office, uh, and we'll help you out uh, with those.
All right, appreciate it. Mister Strata?
Nothing in particular, just keeping busy during this uh, time, however, I wanna take the opportunity to, now that Kristen was talking about um, vacancies and, and new staff. Our uh, I T, uh, used to be I T and now is analyst, and our new I T re- is gonna replace him, is going to start on uh, June twenty third, so we're gonna be the full family.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nothing too exciting, um, except for one last career day at Ben Hall's. Those are always exciting for us, uh, especially for the kids. Um, tomorrow's, I'm sorry, tomorrow's the last meeting. And then graduation is on Friday, so again, cautionary tale, be responsible, and other than that, I have nothing. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mister Lancer?
The, also repeat that graduation Friday will be uh, having additional resources available for that, as will A M R.
All right, thank you. Hopefully, we don't need them. All righty. Mister Marika?
Uh, nothing additional to report, man.
Mister Smith?
Uh, we have been busy uh, continuing to fill our vacancies, so uh, we have a few new hires to share uh, with our seasonal staff. Uh, we have um, Jaden Alvarez, lifeguard one, uh, with Parks and Recreation. Caitlin Beragiota, the lifeguard one with Parks and Recreation. Kylie Beragiota with lifeguard one with Parks and Recreation. We have Gualberto Castro, lifeguard three, Parks and Recreation. Andrew Pruitt, uh, li- uh, recreation leader two with Parks and Recreation. And that is it for this week. I think we have two more coming in and then we will be finished up with our seasonal staff.
All right. Thank you. Mister Garcia?
Nothing to report this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
All righty. Mister Moreno?
If I was a betting person, I, I'd put my money on Tony. Seeing the lifeguards, uh. Uh, nothing to report, Mister Mayor.
All right, thank you. City Clerk?
Um, I'd just like to say congratulations to the class of twenty twenty five.
All right. Mister Fandosa?
Nothing to report.
Mister Ida?
I always have something. Uh, I attended um, the Ruben Cutting for L M Tax or Professional Tax Services. That was nice. They had cars, they had a band, a bar if you were drinking, um, so that was good. I also saw our staff at the S B one for the Imperial County um, road improvements, and so lots of ideas out there. Hopefully, there'll be lots of money for all the ideas out there. And then um, our town hall for the park. Um, I wish there was more people that attended. Hopefully, we'll get a good turnout on the online. Speak their mind and put in what, what amenities they want, right? And then um, well, I attended a meeting today with the I B Chamber of Commerce in regards to the drone show that's proposed. Well, it's gonna happen on July fifth. Um, thank you, Chief Reel, for being on that call as well, and then hopefully Dennis can come to some sort of consensus as far as manpower, overtime, or something like that. And then I had brought up Tony for next year, that Imperial does always a wonderful job to maybe partner up next year in regards to that. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Nothing to report.
Mister Robert Amparano?
Nothing to report, just thanks for all the hard work.
And I, if you, if the clerk doesn't mind at this time and the mayor, I can report out of closed session?
Yes.
Just we took it out of order, I apologize. So the council met in closed session today, discussed one item of real property with the A P N's listed on the agenda. Um, direction was given regarding terms to the agency negotiator. The council also discussed one item of anticipated litigation. Direction was given to council. The council also discussed conference with labor negotiators with the labor unions listed on the agenda and direction was given to the agency representative. That concludes my report.
All right. And I also attended the town hall meeting for the regional park and I wanted to Tony has the answers. You asked him a question, he's on it, and he doesn't get riled up neither. All righty, thank you. Great job. All right, I'll adjourn this meeting till Wednesday, June eighteenth, twenty twenty five.